Today is March 10th, 2021.
May.
May, sorry. Did I say March?
It's got to be a minute.
May 10th, 2021, our regular Board of Education meeting. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. For the next part of our meeting, we're going to go into the public hearing on the 2021-2022 Proposed Adopted Budget. I will now open up for any questions. Hearing none and seeing none in our chat, I will close the public hearing for the 2021-2022 Proposed Adopted Budget. Dr. Ricka.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. I would like to ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. As we remember Eleanor Holman, who was a psychologist at the Middle and High Schools from 1970 to 1992, Aldree Hubbard, who was librarian at Highlands, who retired in 1979, Carmella Stefiero, a cafeteria worker at Highlands and the high school from 1994 to 2019, and Sybil Winterburn, a teaching assistant at Ridgeway School from 1986 to 1999. Thank you.
Thank you for leading our moment of silence. Next, we will go into announcements by the board. I will start off with a couple of things. A week or so ago, we learned that one of our students, Nathaniel Fields, won the Congressional Art Competition of New York's 17th Congressional District. The winning artwork will be displayed for one year in the U.S. Capitol Building. I would also like to state that this student has also been a participant on our Equity Committee and just wanted to congratulate him on this achievement. Many of us attended the LOX Games, a very important step for all of our athletes. Just being there despite the weather and seeing some sense of getting back to the way things had been was a good feeling. Our students were happy just to be out and about and doing the things that they enjoy in the LOX Games. I had the opportunity to attend a couple of football games to support our football team. And again, just something that allows us to get back to the normalcy of the athletic world for our students, and many of them said it was meaningful to them. Are there any more announcements?
I'll mention a few things. So I was able to attend the Grade Eight Information Night for the high school, which was well-attended and really appreciate the administration's accessibility in, you know, making presentations that families could watch beforehand and then also be accessible for questions during the session. So thank you for that. I attended the PTA's budget meeting, and we really appreciate all the support that the PTAs have given us. Many of us, I think all of us, were at the U.S. Secretary of Education's visit to
Absolutely, yeah.
White Plains High School, and probably Dr. Ricka will talk about that some more, what an honor it was. And it was really incredible at how impressed he was with with what we've done through the pandemic and really, you know, sort of an exemplar school district. So that was really an honor. I also attended Washington DC Education Policy Seminar where I got to participate in discussions with staff representing different think tanks in Washington DC having to do with education policy, representing different philosophies. Some were more conservative, libertarian, more on the liberal side, and really looking at the question of policymaking at the national level and how it can influence or not influence equity issues and what the role of the federal government is in in education policy. So it's very interesting.
I went to the talent show, which was our first outdoor event, which was absolutely incredible. The weather, God smiled on us. It was perfect. It was warm, and the diversity of the kids was incredible, from all sorts of types of dance and music and poetry. It was wonderful.
Yeah, that was a good evening. That was a good evening. Yep.
It was great that everybody was outside and socially distanced, and it's wonderful atmosphere.
It was 70 degrees. It was perfect.
The talent show was great. LOX was great. And I know that Rosemary and I are wearing a little bit of MAS swag tonight.
I have my MAS at home. Yeah.
Mine's here. Thank you.
So thankful for that. What a lovely surprise to find. And, you know, that talent show was just something that we all needed, I have to say, to be out.
It was the first event that was outside, the first in-person event. Yeah.
And then we got to see each other too, which was really good.
Yep.
Any more announcements? Thank you.
If I can jump in quickly, really, again, just to kind of, again, add that it was great with the Secretary of Education coming and visiting the school district was fantastic. One of the greatest events, I think, that our PTAs put together every year is the book giveaway, and that was held two weekends ago at Eastview. Again, just a terrific, terrific event. It was delayed last year because of COVID. I know they held it over July. And, you know, I think as we all are, we hate throwing away books. It's just, it's just something that your muscles won't let you do. And this is really a great opportunity to hang out to those books and then see people come out and get that and get some really great reading and some great books. And it's a wonderful community event. So that took place at Eastview. Wonderful to see. LOX was also fantastic. We sat in on some committee meetings. We'll talk about that later, Finance and HR. As a parent and as a board member too, I had the opportunity to sit in at the high school signing ceremony. So we saw a number of our high school seniors sign as athletes to continue on playing athletics in college next year. And that was really terrific to see, and some kids getting some really great offers to play and certainly getting tuition offers, which is really fantastic. And that was terrific. Also, Teachers Appreciation Week was last week, so we didn't meet last week. Otherwise, we'd say we appreciate you this week, last week, but we do appreciate you still this week. The signs and the lunches at the PTAs shared with their schools were certainly really wonderful. I know that they were well-received by many. And I just thought I'd share an interesting story. You know, my wife does teach at Highlands, and she gave a story of one of her colleagues who was on jury duty. And while she was on jury duty, she ended up teaching, talking to the Commissioner of Jurors about what she did, and there was a connection made. And before you knew it, Highlands Middle School students were talking to the Commissioner of Jurors from the county courthouse last week. And it's just a really great opportunity. It's what, it's what our students are learning at school. It's real-life real-life opportunities for our kids to talk to people that work in the court system. And the Commissioner of Jurors also share the types of jobs that exist within that system. It's, of course, it's a lot of lawyers and judges, and you have, and you have court officers and other support people that help run the court systems. So I think it was really fantastic. You know, again, we've got our teachers who might not always be in the building, but they're always thinking about those opportunities, and they were able to provide wonderful opportunities for our students and our real-life opportunities. And I think that was just a really, really neat thing that they were able to pull together, and it happened over Zoom. And, you know, just, just, just really terrific, terrific stuff. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more announcements?
That's a quick one. Jim, my daughter was over at Highlands and had the opportunity, and she came home and talked about that. So that was a great presentation, considering it was via Zoom as well to the whole school. I just want to highlight, I'm not sure if our student representative is going to mention it, so I don't want to steal what you were going to share, but I want to highlight the White Plains High School Class of 2021 has an Instagram page where they're highlighting the graduates, their school, and what their best experience was, or memorable experience was while they were at White Plains High School. So if you're not following DubSetClass underscore, what is it, 2021, I think you should definitely give them a follow and see where they're, where they're headed. It's a really great account to follow.
Thank you. Thank you. Anymore? I think we've covered it. I think we've covered it. We're going to move on to public participation. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Will there be any public participation tonight? I don't see anything in the chat. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. It looks that we will not have any public participation tonight. Thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Eller. Thank you, trustees, and welcome, everybody, this evening. Thanks for taking time to be with us. First and foremost, I hope that everybody, all of our White Plains City School District moms, had a great Mother's Day. Hopefully, you got to relax a little bit, and folks took care of you for once. We always say every day should be Mother's Day, right? Where would we be without our moms? And I do also want to thank, echo the appreciation and thanks to our PTA. I know Mrs. Buck is here with us and many of our PTA members this evening, and I would just like to thank the PTA not only for their constant support of all of our children in our school district, but also looking for new and novel ways to support our kids and to make for fun and engaging activities. And more than ever, over the last 14 months, we have seen the White Plains City School District PTA mobilize. And I mean, think of amazing opportunities for our children. And you should just know that we are all so appreciative for everything that you've done and for all of your support. Boy, what a difference a year makes. If you think about where we were this time last year to where we are today, yeah, I know, we still have challenges in front of us, but oh my goodness, how far we've come together. And we've done it in a way that I think is really, it's just so white plains. It really is just so emblematic of the close-knit community that we have. We always joked, you know, that we're 56,000 people, 11 square miles, over 150,000 people a day to work, but, you know, we're a small town, and folks just coming together to support each other has been really just amazing. So thanks for all that. I do want to make sure that I stop right now and welcome Fiona. Fiona is here with us this evening, and she's going to give us our update from White Plains High School. Hey Fiona, how are you?
Hi, I'm Fiona Bradley. I'm the GO co-president with Chris Cardenas. And just a couple of updates. So we are having a socially-distanced movie night outside in the student parking lot. It was supposed to be the seventh, but it got postponed because of the rain, so it's this Friday, actually, which is really exciting. And yeah, I just wanted to, like, reiterate how well, like, compared to one year ago today, how well this whole district has been doing concerning even these outdoor activities, LOX. I know we couldn't have LOX last year. And going back in school, I genuinely, at first, I was a little hesitant, but I came back, and I'm literally so grateful. I love seeing all my friends and seeing everyone, and everyone is so safe. And also shout out to Mr. Janowitz, because he was my principal at MAS when I went. But yeah, I also wanted to thank everybody for making, you know, school, not even the high school, just all schools in White Plains how it is right now. I know I love going to school and seeing my teachers, and I love how everybody is so participating and, you know, taking their time to care for all of our students. So on behalf of all the students here, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Fiona. And I know that I speak for everybody that's in this meeting right now. We are so proud of all of you for all that you've overcome and, you know, just participating and being part of the decision-making processes and giving feedback. We're just, we're really blessed, and we appreciate our kids. You know, you guys are the ones we're here for. So thank you. And you should know that we're appreciative of you. And Mr. Janowitz was giving you a thumbs up. He remembers, he remembers you when you were a little kid. We do have some, some great, you know, just so much good news, and I do want to recognize a snapshot of some of the good news that we have to share. First of all, really important Wednesday, this coming Wednesday is National School Nurse Appreciation Day, so certainly we will not forget that in celebrating our school nurses. I also want to congratulate our ninth grader Alexa Reyna on winning a section title in the 500 freestyle with a time of 4 minutes 57 seconds. She placed second in the 200 free as well. Congratulations to our senior Ava Ioneta, placing third in the 50 free. Congratulations to the relay teams of Kara Ha, Grace Ricky, Kristen Cassias, Ava Ioneta, and Alexa Reyna on their outstanding representation for White Plains High School and ending the season in excellent fashion. They were really fantastic this year. Also want to congratulate, and I'm sure there's at least one trustee who wants to share in that congratulations, for senior Julia Ricky on setting a new school record for six dives against Ry, Dr. Byrne, if you happen to be watching. Julia dove to 286 points in her final duel me. Congratulations, Tiger. Also, congratulations to my man Sebastian Garibaldi on finishing first place in the High School Nationals in Virginia Beach at 285 pounds, and he will be attending Brown this coming fall. I told Sebastian, if he gets down to 215, I might try and wrestle him, but I have a feeling he'd pin me in second. Congratulations, Sebastian. Also want to congratulate seniors Max Galkin and Sean Ivers on winning the 2021 New York State U.S. Bowling Conference Youth Championship, along with brothers Jaden and Desmond Washington from Greenberg. So we had some inter-district teamwork there for us to bring home the New York State title. So congratulations to all of you. Also want to congratulate our senior Nathaniel Fields. Nathaniel is such a talented artist, and we knew that. But what you might not know is Nathaniel's piece entitled Deliverance, which is featured in last year's Roar, has been selected as the first-place winner in Congressman Mondaire Jones's Congressional Art Competition for New York's 17th Congressional District. So Nathaniel's piece will be hanging in the Capitol for all visitors to be able to appreciate, reflect on, and enjoy. Just so much really to congratulate our Tigers, and we are in awe of all of you. Today, we found out that Ridgeway Elementary School is being recognized by Imagine Learning as a beacon of excellence school for their hard work and bringing to the forefront innovative ways to reach and engage with children throughout the pandemic. So congratulations to our Ridgeway colleagues. It is also, let's hear it for them, Church Street Night tonight. So thanks to our Church Street champions for being with us. I had the great, great pleasure of participating in the math celebration last week, and thank you, Myra and Merle, and everybody for letting me be part of that. It was just so well-run and organized, and the kids were fantastic. So congratulations, Church Street, on a great event last week as well. Very quickly, thanks again for the opportunity to have the budget hearing this evening, and thanks for everybody who has been participating in the process and also allowing us to speak on the budget and share the information. You all know that this year's budget is an extraordinarily strong fiscal plan that comes in well below the tax cap of 3.88% at 1.23%, or roughly just about, just under $13.50 on the average assessed homeowner per year, but more importantly, supportive of every single one of our programs, all of the opportunities that our children have, and keeps us positioned for solid fiscal footing as we look toward the future. So I want to thank again everybody for all of the hard work. And as we know, budgeting in White Plains is not a once-a-year endeavor. It's an all-year-long process, and I believe that we're better for it for having so many voices at the table and so many folks that are part of that process. Reopening, it continues to go well. Last week was a fantastic week. We had, now just bear with me, one identified case of COVID-19 in our schools last week. Might not sound like a big deal to you. It's a huge deal to me, and it was a giant deal to Nurse Maggie. And thank you to all of the moms and dads and guardians and everybody who is assisting at home and making sure that we're not coming to school or work when we're feeling under the weather. It makes all the difference in the world. So we're going to continue to keep on that positive trend, we hope. We'll keep sharing all the information with everyone in our community, but that was great news last week. We also had our first pop-up vaccination clinic at White Plains High School. I'd like to thank everybody who partnered with us, White Plains Hospital, the county, the state, the governor's office. We had the lieutenant governor stop by, really under the radar to see how the, how the pop-up was going. And we do intend to be able to offer, hopefully, more opportunities for families to engage in vaccination if they're willing and able within the school district. And that's going to be, there'll be more to come on that as we head into the summer months, but we want to keep those opportunities available for folks who are interested in it. I do want to just draw attention to the end-of-the-year activities, thinking about being able to participate in person. That's, that's been our goal, and we have that in place. There are requirements that are not White Plains City School District requirements, there's State of New York Department of Health requirements for participating in these larger-scale events. And so what I've been sharing with parents and guardians is two things. In order to be able to participate in either the in-person Moving Up Ceremony for Highlands or the commencement ceremony at LOX for the high school class of 2021, you have to either present a certificate, your vaccination card, which, you know, most of us have now on the Excelsior pass, or negative results on a, either a, I'm sorry, a PCR test or rapid test at the time of admission. That's important. If folks don't want to have to worry about taking a test and potentially dealing with a false positive situation, the vaccine is the best way to go. If you're willing and able, if you're concerned about vaccination or have questions, reach out to your healthcare provider and talk that through. If you have questions for us, we're happy to answer, but there's plenty of time between now and moving up and commencement to be able to take advantage of vaccination if you are so inclined. But that is important to just keep sort of reiterating. I did that last Friday, and I'll continue to remind folks. And again, if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to us. We did have a great visit with the Secretary of Education. It was, it was wonderful to be able to welcome him and his team from the U.S. Department of Education. And I just can't say enough about our team members, all throughout our educational and greater community. We have worked together from day one. And I think, you know, and again, imperfect, imperfect, always areas for improvement, always, you know, constructive criticism to be received. However, to be able to be part of a process where the secretary recognizes our district as one that, from a collaborative and a transparency standpoint, is leading in the nation was really a humbling experience. And I just want to thank everybody who participated in that, getting us to that point, and certainly thanking the Department of Education and the secretary for his visit. It was great. Subsequently, I had a conversation with members of the Department of Justice and the Department of Education on ways in which they can support school districts nationally and not only helping to reopen schools safely and supported, but also to make sure that every single child across the country feels that they are part, an integral part of their learning community. So how can government help? How can government help local school districts to make sure they're supporting every child? And that's a big lofty conversation and one that's going to be ongoing, but certainly I felt really privileged and humbled to be part of that and look forward to continuing that conversation as we move on as well. Highlands is officially in the process of becoming an avid demonstration school. It's been years in the making. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Mr. Spatafor and all of the Highlands community as they work through this process. There's a lot to be proud of in the White Plains City School District. And we look forward to celebrating the tenure of our faculty members in the upcoming meeting. And of course, I have to stop with this. Next Tuesday, from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., it is Election Day, and everybody is encouraged to participate in the process. You can go to the district's website and very easily type in your street address to find where your polling site is. If you cannot make it in person or will not be able to make it in person to the polling site, there is still plenty of time to register for an absentee ballot. If you have questions about the process, you can always reach out to the number-one district clerk in the State of New York, Michelle Schoenfeld. She'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Don't call me, because I'm just going to ring you to Michelle. No, I'm kidding. Call me to, but Michelle will definitely know a lot more than I would. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my update. I really do appreciate everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ricka. Before I move to summary action items, I do have to let Ms. Castillo and Ms. Jackson know from Church Street that I was kept toasty warm in my Church Street sweatshirt on Saturday, all day. So I want to let you know that I did rep Church Street, and Charlie and I are repping Maric Avenue. Some of us did have one on Maric Avenue gear on Saturday as well. And, you know, just wanted to give everyone a shout-out. So next, we're going to move to summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. Do they have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Dr. Ricka?
Thank you, Madam President. If I could direct your attention to item B, 4B, we are grateful for the following donation, very, very generous donations. $500 from Stillman Management Realty Company for Eastview School, $12,200 from the Friends of White Plains Public Schools for year-end activities at Highland Middle School and White Plains High School, and for a program at Church Street Elementary School. Thank you so much to the Friends. Two field hockey nets from Jim Ricky for the high school athletic program. Thank you very much, Mr. Ricky. A cello from Angel Tenerello, I'm sorry, for the music program. $1,000 from Harry Rothman for the Charlie Jenkins Memorial Award. $3,000 from Mr. and Mrs. Michael Kurtz. $3,000 from Mary Anderson, and $5,000 from Robert Kurtz for the Margaret L. Kurtz Memorial Scholarship. Thank you so much for your generous donations. $500 from John Collins for the American Legion Post 135 Scholarship. $2,000 from Dr. Terry Thomas Clem for the Dorothy H. Thomas Memorial Scholarship. Thank you, Dr. Clem. $700 from Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Brown, Titan Concrete Incorporated, and Robin Castronova for the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship. $1,000 from Bonnie Vendola for the Audrey Rogers Memorial Scholarship, and $400 from Mr. and Mrs. Chris Cantori for the Caesar and Joseph Cantori Awards. Thank you all so much for your very, very generous donations and all of your support for our Tigers.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was on mute. All right.
Next, we're going to move to our individual action items. Our first act, our first individual action item is the amendment to the award of request for, quote, "for graduation event services 2020 through 2021." And per the backup, we have had to amend the quote to ensure we're doing all that we can to make this graduation memorable for our students who are moving up and for our students from the high school who are graduating. May I have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, um, we have um, a resignation. Uh, may I have um, a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Daisy Rodriguez uh, from Eastview Middle School um, effective the close of business, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. May I have a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And and we certainly wish uh, Ms. uh, Rodriguez all the best. I don't know, Dr. Rick, if you had further comment?
Sure, I, you know, you you always hate to to see a member of the team move on, but but certainly we are uh, we're very proud of of the work that Dr. Rodriguez has done with the team at Eastview and and we commend her on her movement into a new role as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction in uh, in in her, what will be her, her new school district and we wish her well. Wants a Tiger, always a Tiger. So uh, we'll, we'll make sure that we keep an eye out and 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 we're here if she ever needs us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, next we'll have um, item C. The recommended approval of a side letter of agreement with the White Plains Teachers Association from July first, two thousand twenty to through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have any questions or comment? Yes, Dr. Rick.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just, just a comment. This is a side letter that when you look at the dates, you might ask yourself, why are we, why are we looking at this right now? It's almost the end of the academic year. This speaks, I think, volumes about the collaborative spirit, the partnership that the White Plains Teachers Association has um, with the administration and the Board of Education because this is symbolic of the work that we've done for the last twelve, fourteen months. Um, yes, the side agreement will sunset at the end of this academic year. And if we need to enter into the same M O A for the next academic year, we will. But I really do, I I have to give all of my thanks and appreciation uh, to President Lyons, the leadership and every single member of the W P T A for all of their hard work, their dedication and and truly their courage throughout this entire process. So um, thank you for considering this M O A this evening. Um, and I think everybody knows that our partnership and our collaboration will always live on in the spirit of what's best for our children in our school district. So thank you for for that moment, Rook.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Next.
I abstain. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have the recommended approval to add um, grade seven through eight lacrosse to the resolution approving highs, approving high risk sports on February eighth, two thousand twenty one. May I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Second.
Any question or comment? And and if I may, this is adding um, adding lacrosse or designating it as a high risk sport with in relation to um, COVID nineteen. However, we are taking all the necessary precautions for our students. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next, we'll move um, to item E. We have the recommended approval of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Budget um, and slate for two thousand twenty one through two thousand twenty two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, thank you. And and you know, all of us do attend seminars, classes and training um, from Westchester Putnam School Board Association, I think, or we, I think you would all agree. It's it's a vital learning conduit for us um, on the board.
Yeah, I want to thank Kane for his representation. Yeah, thanks, Kane.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from this vote, but I just want to say it's an amazing organization. You know, not because I'm a board director, but because of all the advocacy they do do for for the region. Um, uh, Dr. Rick has been involved in their new board member training. We've been involved in that at some level. They have, they hosted a series of um, open houses and meetings throughout the pandemic on Fridays that I know Cheryl had an opportunity to attend many of them to hear from other districts and how they were navigating the pandemic. So absolutely supportive, but I am going to abstain from this vote.
We need to get them to not conflict with some of our board meetings, that's all.
Sorry, you you cut out there.
Uh, thank you for that, Kane. I I also participated um, on one of the onboard officers roundtable. And it's just so good to to connect with the peers and other officers. And it's just a vital um, service that I really um, enjoy um, and feel it's worthwhile. So. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And we have noted Kane's noted um, abstain. Next. We have the recommended uh, approval of the recommended nomination of Peggy Zigby. Am I pronouncing it right, Kane?
I think it's Zugaby.
Zugaby, yeah.
Yeah.
For um, New York N Y S S A Area Ten Director for two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty three.
She's been in that role for for a while as well, so.
Yeah.
Peggy represents us over at NISBA, so she's a, an advocate again for our region and our Area Ten. So this is, we do this happily.
Yes, we absolutely do. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Who's second?
Second.
I think we've gotten all our comments ahead of our motions and everything. So yes, she represents us and represents it well. And as to your point, Cheryl, she has been in the role um, and is very experienced and um. Happily, we do this, as Kane said. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, next, we're going to move on to our board discussion. Um, we do have our finance reports um, posted and we are well aware of all of the work um, that goes into um, getting us to this point with our budget. Um, I don't know if there's any further comment there.
Uh, Finance Committee met. Um, this is the time we reviewed the, started the external audit procedures. We also reviewed the new nutrition program that's going to be starting and what's involved with that in our meeting besides the budget stuff.
Yeah.
And Randy, if I could add, the community link looks great. It's just the overview of the budget coming up next week. It's just so clear, you know, but so thank you for putting that together as well.
Absolutely. I do know people are waiting with bated breath to get that um, to get the 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 community link with with the, just a very clear and succinct message regarding the budget. So I I.
It was nice. It was, it was easy to understand.
Absolutely.
Well done.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you um, to to Michelle Schoenfeld for that. Any other committee reports?
Curriculum and Instruction met.
Yep, we met.
We had some discussion about the progress of uh, the kindergarten choice program. And we also talked about the renewal of the middle school and high school um, math books updating to the two thousand twenty two version of Big Ideas in Math. Our license is is ending. There's a a new platform and a new version that everyone felt was a really, really a worthwhile uh, upgrade and it looks like it's actually saving us money. So that's.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other um?
I did want to mention, I put it in the chat, that the Pfizer vaccine has now been approved for twelve years up to fifteen. And that's really important and maybe important for some of our students who are moving up uh, from Highlands for the potential, if they have potential to be vaccinated before um, and before the moving up, so.
Thank you, Dr. Stein. I keep looking on the, on the state website. They've not yet updated it, but I'm.
Great news.
Trying to get my last order in there for uh, for the vaccination.
Mm hmm.
The other thing, we we had our human resources committee meeting.
Yep.
And while there's certainly some things we can't talk about, I think uh, Mr. Pepper went through the recruitment efforts that the district has uh, really been working on. There's, I believe, eighteen positions that uh, that they're aware of at this point in time that need to be filled and a number of them are already being addressed. And then the other address, addressing how to how to cast a wider net in our recruitment efforts as a school district. Uh, so working through a recruitment, a recruitment program called NEMnet. Um, also recruiting uh, with H C B U's and also recruiting through our city colleges and universities to again, try to reach a deeper uh, deeper pool of candidates. And I think this is a great first step, Mr. Pepper. And uh, I I appreciate your efforts in doing that as well as uh, the the job fair that the district held, which was uh, you did that all remotely this year. Last year, I know you did it uh, at Highlands and this year it was, I believe, done remotely.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments? So before um, we adjourn the meeting, I, I just want to say it's been, you know, again, another um, just a busy time for us as we try to move forward. Um, as the pandemic slows down, um, I do want to thank um, Maric Avenue School for the nice swag that they left for all of us. I have to let you know, coming home and meeting that was just another added, just a great bonus of of um, what makes White Plains so special. I'm happy for my Church Street um, sweatshirt that I was able to wear and.
Talk a little bit about that sweatshirt because I'm.
I know, this is a shameless plug for all the other schools to uh. Alst, at the board.
I think I got it like a year ago and I wore it. I was waiting to wear it to, you know, out to a school thing. I've been sporting it now. I don't want Myra or Merle to think that I have. No, 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 no. So, but again, it's just, you know, um, a really thankful and just humble thank you um, for these little things that make our days a little brighter here. Um, and I and I just want to express that on behalf of the board. So if there are no other comments um, from Dr. Rick or any of the board members, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Be safe, everyone, and thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Myra, I'm special. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, Myra, where's my sweatshirt?
I got you. We got you a shirt.
Myra, don't worry. Don't worry, I'm special.
Have a great night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Bye.